Given to the city attorney to initiate litigation. Item 3.2.1, an update was provided. Item 3.3.1, an update was provided. And this item, we've reached a tentative agreement which will be considered an open session on tonight's Mesa and City Council meetings. Item 3.3.2 regarding SEIU, an update was provided and direction given to the agency representatives. Item 3.3.3 regarding camp, an update was provided. A tentative agreement has been reached and that agreement will be considered at tonight's open session at the Mesa and City Council agendas. And that's a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. That adjourns this meeting?
We are practically there, isn't it?
We are moving on to a special study session. It is now 6:37 PM, calling this meeting to order. And I'm going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance because we've got that on our regular City Council meeting agenda. And please note, we are all still here. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on the study session, the special study session? This is going to be on administrative citations. Seeing none, shall we begin?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're here for a study session to discuss the administrative, proposed administrative citations ordinance. So the overview for tonight's study session includes going through the background, why are we considering this ordinance? Going over the proposed ordinance, what would administrative enforcement look like in the city of Emeryville? We'll have examples to illustrate administrative enforcement, and then we'll end with questions. The City Council first considered the proposed ordinance that was included as Attachment 1 in your packet at the May 5, 2015 City Council meeting. At the time, the City Council had concerns about the ordinance and declined to introduce it as is. Instead, the minimum wage ordinance was amended to include administrative enforcement procedures for that ordinance only. To date, staff has not issued any fines under the minimum wage ordinance. Why is the council reconsidering the ordinance tonight? Regulatory programs need efficient and effective enforcement to enable implementation. It's important to note that code enforcement is a form of implementing council's policy direction. Administrative enforcement is about enforcing the ordinances that the council has already adopted. One general enforcement program provides for greater efficiency by staff and less confusion by the public. The city could continue to bring forward ordinances that have an administrative enforcement mechanism similar to the minimum wage ordinance. For example, when we adopted the recent medical marijuana delivery ordinance, we could have brought forward an administrative enforcement scheme in that ordinance, but we did not. Having multiple enforcement-
We may need to.
Sorry?
Sorry. We may need to.
We may need to. We'll get there. Having multiple enforcement mechanisms can create confusion. In sum, tonight's study session is about having a discussion about what a general administrative enforcement scheme would look like in the city of Emeryville. Our current enforcement tools require the use of the judicial system. Basically, we have criminal enforcement and civil enforcement. The use of criminal enforcement is basically punitive in nature. It penalizes conduct. A misdemeanor conviction can subject a person to a $1,000 fine and/or six months in jail. A conviction for an infraction subjects a person to fines, and they can escalate with each subsequent violation. Civil enforcement can also be punitive in nature if the enforcement seeks to impose civil penalties. However, civil enforcement is usually about seeking an order to abate the nuisance and to stop the person from committing a code violation again. Civil enforcement can be costly because it requires the use of attorneys, and it can be lengthy because of how long it takes for cases to work their way through the civil Administrative enforcement is about greater city control. It enables the city to levy a fine and collect the fine. It enables the city to abate some violations in limited circumstances. There is minimal judicial involvement, which means a more efficient and quicker process. And with administrative enforcement, the goal is abatement of the violation. It's not necessarily punitive the way criminal enforcement is. The fine associated with administrative enforcement is designed to prompt somebody to correct a violation. So included in your packet was a proposed ordinance, and I'll walk you through the basics of that proposed ordinance. The first question is, when does staff issue a fine? In general, staff would first issue a notice of violation, informing the person that a violation exists and it needs to be corrected. And it's only once time has lapsed that a fine could then be imposed as it relates to that violation. There are exceptions to that notice requirement. If there is an immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare, then staff may issue an NOV and fine immediately, and they may also proceed to abate the nuisance immediately. And we'll get a little bit more into that later on in the presentation. A person may dispute the fine. They don't necessarily have to accept the fine as staff issues it. If they decide to appeal it, it would go to a third-party hearing officer. The hearing officer would conduct a hearing and issue a decision, and the hearing officer's decision would be final. What that means is that if a person wishes to then challenge the hearing officer's decision, they have to seek judicial review of that decision. One of the questions that comes up is, what if the person cannot afford the fine? In the proposed ordinance, there is a provision where a person may appeal the citation and request a hardship waiver to account for the financial difficulties. But when staff is evaluating a code enforcement case, the ability for someone to pay is something that should be considered. If somebody cannot pay a fine, then an administrative citation and fine may not be the best enforcement tool to use to abate the situation. Ultimately, staff wants to find a way to get the situation corrected and to stop whatever behavior was leading to the situation. So here is an overview of the process. So this chart was included in your packet, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it so it could all fit on one page. But basically, we start here with the alleged violation. If it presents an immediate threat to the public safety, staff may summary abate and issue NOV and fine. However, for most code enforcement cases, what's going to happen is staff issues a notice of violation, informing the person that there is a code violation to be corrected. Thank you. If the person corrects the violation, then no further action is necessary. If the alleged violation continues, this is when staff issues the fine. If the alleged violation continues, the person may incur additional and increasing fines, but often, there is a limit to that. And again, staff would like to see the situation abated. So if fines aren't prompting corrective action, we need to reevaluate at this point. And that shows that the city may initiate abatement. Alternatively, the City Council may authorize a lien or a special assessment for collection of unpaid fines. Another branch right here maybe is when you start looking at civil enforcement if your administrative enforcement is not working. So then if we go back up here, where staff has issued a fine, the person may appeal the fine. And what happens after the appeal of the fine is that a hearing officer hears the matter. And the hearing officer may dismiss the situation, or sorry, may dismiss the citation, which means that no fine is owed, or if it's been paid, it's refunded. Alternatively, the hearing officer may uphold the citation, which means that the person may pay the fine, or they may seek two types of judicial review. Judicial review under Code of Civil Procedure 1094.5, that is basically your typical lawsuit, where you file a complaint, the city would have an answer due, basically your typical writ. With respect to judicial review per Government Code 53069.4, judicial review there is a limited civil action. What this means is that the person who has the citation appeals it to court, and it's treated as a limited civil case, and so it's more like contesting a traffic citation rather than a full-blown court case. In the limited civil actions, they're limited to basically disputing facts, whereas if you have a full-blown writ, that's where your legal arguments come in. And so this is the overall snapshot of the process. And overall, the timeframe, sorry, I'd written down the timeframe. It's approximately 90 days, give or take, to go from when staff issues a fine to having a final decision by the hearing officer. So I'm going to go. And so now, we have some examples to walk you through how the different enforcement tools work. And most of these are based off of situations that staff has had to confront over the past few years. These are examples of regulatory programs that would benefit from a general admin citation ordinance. Housing is one of them, enforcement of building codes to maintain habitable housing. The noise ordinance. New and proposed programs would include medical marijuana and short-term rentals. Our first example is a noise violation. Your neighbor likes to throw loud parties. You have asked your neighbor to keep the volume down on the parties after a certain hour, but your neighbor refuses to do anything. The next time there is a loud party, you call the police. How can the police enforce the noise ordinance? So under criminal enforcement, the police could issue an infraction. The matter would then be heard by a traffic court magistrate. And in this case, with infractions, DAs are not, sorry, district attorneys are not assigned to prosecute the infractions. And the downside to that is, we also would have a magistrate who's not necessarily familiar with the city's noise ordinance, or even with some of the technicalities of noise ordinances, and therefore doesn't necessarily have the, doesn't necessarily understand how enforcement might work. The city has then left prosecuting the matter on two fronts. One would be against the defendant, but then also having to educate the judge on the technicalities of a noise ordinance violation. If the city were to enforce the noise ordinance through civil enforcement, the city would have to file a lawsuit, but it could easily be over a year before the court would issue any order restraining the neighbor from violating the noise ordinance. In that time period, the neighbor could continue to throw loud parties. With administrative enforcement, what would happen is, the police would first warn the neighbor, hey, these parties are violating the noise ordinance. You need to please stop. And then if the neighbor continues to throw those loud parties, the landlord, or sorry, the neighbor is already on notice, and the police could start issuing admin citations as it relates to enforcing the noise ordinance. Hopefully, that would gain compliance. If the neighbor refused to pay the fines, then what would happen is, the city could lien the property with the fines. And typically, what happens when cities lien properties with fines is, the fines are either paid when the property sells, or alternatively, if the owner goes to refinance a mortgage, that's when these liens get cleared. So that would be one example. Example two involves-
I'm sorry, I have a question, Andrea. So if the person, the noisy neighbor in question is a renter, does the lien get applied, does the citation and the lien get applied to the landlord?
So at my prior agency, it was a college town, and often, you would have landlords renting to college students, and they would throw loud parties. And the way the enforcement scheme worked there is, tenant throws a loud party, tenant receives a notice, and then one notice is then mailed to the landlord. And they had an enforcement scheme where you would end up fining both the landlord and the tenant. The tenant is being fined for the conduct, the landlord is being fined because they're maintaining a property that was considered a nuisance. So it would depend on how we set up the administrative citation ordinance, but there is a way to hold both the tenant and the landlord responsible.
That's just, yeah, I guess I'll get to that comment later, just because of our high amount of rentals.
So example two would be building code violations. A tenant complains to the city that a landlord is not maintaining the building. The building department inspects and finds violations that should be corrected but do not warrant red tagging the building. The chief building official issues an NOV to the landlord, and the landlord replies, he's not going to fix the violations. How can the chief building official enforce the building code? And so again, if we start with criminal enforcement, the city may be able to recommend the matter to the district attorney for criminal prosecution because the landlord is intentionally violating the building code. However, it's important to note that the criminal enforcement won't actually abate the violations. And this is a classic example where the city's interest is ensuring that the housing remains habitable. And so criminal enforcement would not necessarily correct the building violations. And without abatement, there is the risk of losing the housing to disrepair. For civil enforcement, the city could file a lawsuit to compel the landlord to abate the code violations, but the lawsuit could take years for resolution in order to compel the building owner to take action. Again, there's this risk of losing the housing to disrepair. With administrative enforcement, the city could begin issuing fines after it advises the landlord of the NOV. If the homeowner fails to pay the fines, the city could seek to include them as a special assessment on the tax bill to ensure payment. Generally, in this type of situation, fines can be useful in compelling compliance with the code, because for landlords, it may be about the bottom line, and fines would be hitting into the bottom line. Our third example, this involves summary abatement. There is a fire at a house. The chief building official has red tagged, this is a different example. The chief building official has red tagged the house because of the damage. The city receives complaints that there are squatters living in the house who are creating unsafe conditions in the neighborhood. There are fights, drug use, et cetera amongst the squatters. Chief building official directs the property owner to secure the house, in other words, board up the windows to prevent the squatters, but the property owner refuses to cooperate. How can either the police department or the chief building official abate the nuisance to prevent the squatters? When this situation came to staff, what staff really wanted to do was just go and board up the windows, because that would have helped the situation immensely. Unfortunately, without a summary abatement provision, staff could not do that. We went to civil enforcement and got the abatement order from the court to go in and board up the windows. And again, you could go the criminal enforcement route, but that's not going to address the issue of the squatters. And so with administrative enforcement, including summary abatement authority, this is how staff would potentially exercise that authority. It creates an immediate public health and safety issue, and it's limited. Anything more, and you're looking at really just general abatement. And finally, we have medical marijuana delivery as our last example. A neighbor complains that a medical marijuana dispensary consistently delivers after 8:00 PM in violation of the city's new ordinance, but never later than 9:00 PM. The police chief has warned the dispensary that deliveries need to end by 8:00 PM, but the dispensary explains that with its expanding business, it finds itself running late. It will eventually get around to hiring another driver so all deliveries can be completed by 8:00 PM. How can the police department enforce the delivery hours set forth in the ordinance? So currently, the options for the city to enforce the ordinance would include criminal enforcement, which is just, as I said, that doesn't actually fix the situation. We could do civil enforcement, but again, civil enforcement takes a while, and in the meantime, those deliveries are going to continue to occur. We do have, under the delivery ordinance, we have the ability to revoke the dispensary's delivery permit. However, in this case, if it's otherwise a good dispensary, it doesn't necessarily make sense to revoke a permit over what is a minor but annoying infraction of the ordinance. I should say violation, not infraction in this case. And so in that case, an administrative citation and a fine would hopefully help the dispensary realize that they really need to get around to hiring that extra driver sooner rather than later. And with that, I am available for questions.
Mayor Martinez, before you take questions, as a wrap-up, one thing I want to stress about an administrative, there are a few things I want to stress about an administrative citation process. First is that this is a common tool that you see in a number of other cities, and if anything, Emeryville is unique in that it doesn't have this particular tool available to it. So this is, yes. So this is a common procedure that you see in many other jurisdictions. The other aspect of it is, I really would like to stress that this is a tool for enforcement and not the only tool. Code enforcement is very fact-specific, and when staff is considering, is presented with an issue of code enforcement, you're always looking at the particulars of the facts of the case, the parties that are involved, the circumstances under which the violation occurs, and the desired outcome. And based on all of those circumstances, you, the staff will determine what is the best tool in order to get you there, to get compliance. As Andrea had said, the whole purpose of code enforcement is to get compliance. In this case, stop the behavior that is causing the complaints, or stop the behavior that is resulting in violations of your ordinances. This is, in a case, in an administrative citation scenario, it's appropriate when the violator responds to an economic stimulus. It's not going to be appropriate for all of our cases, but it may be appropriate when, as Andrea had said, for businesses or for other, you know, violators, the bottom line is a factor, and having to pay a fine is incentive to comply with the city's orders. I also wanted to stress that while this is a, you know, this is a scheme that involves the payment of money, this is not a money-making mechanism here. This is not supposed to be an income revenue source for the city. Again, the purpose of it is to prod the homeowner or the violator into compliance, and in a scenario where the payment of a monetary fine is leverage to get them to comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions?
Yeah, I have a question, and I'm glad you spoke to that issue, Michael, because in terms of the fiscal impact, does the city have the ability to set the fines so that they will cover the cost of this program? Or are the fines set by the state?
The fines are going to be set by the City Council by resolution. The fines are not supposed to offset staff's costs. There are other mechanisms where the staff can recover costs as it relates to enforcement. But the fine is not designed to do that. It really is supposed to just be the penalty. There are, for-
Whose decision was that, that the fines would not offset the ability to do that policing?
I, sorry, it's been a while since I've looked at that issue, but I believe there is case law that a general law city or a charter city such as Emeryville is limited on the amount of fines, is limited on the amount of the fine. If you'd like to recover staff costs for enforcement, then there are mechanisms to do that. It would be separate, it would be you issue the fine, and then, for example, some jurisdictions have a code enforcement fee, where if you end up, to clear your code enforcement, you have to pay the fine, and you have to pay a fee on top of that, which is designed to cover staff's costs. Alternatively, there might be another mechanism where you pay the fine, and staff is keeping track of their time, and we're saying, okay, pay the time, and then pay for staff's 100 hours to enforce the code as it relates to you.
Well, when you bring this back to the council, do you intend to include information on that particular aspect?
On cost recovery of staff costs?
Yes.
I can, yes.
How's the rest of the council feel about this?
Yeah, we should see it all, all the information.
I think we should take a look at this cost recovery, because these are people who are not really being good neighbors. And the other people who are being good neighbors, their taxes are paying for this whole thing. So I definitely hope we would look at cost recovery on this.
I think that's fine. Any other questions?
Well, I have some comments, but I'll hold off until we get the public.
Do you want to hold them? Let's hear from the public. Is there anyone from the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's open up discussion.
Let me just clarify. I don't see this as trying to make money or have it be revenue-producing, but I would like it to even out for the good neighbors of the community, so that they're not picking up for the tab for people who consistently go against what makes a good community.
Scott?
I'm ready. Oh, go ahead.
I've just seen life in other cities, big cities, where code enforcement is normal, and of course, I'm amazed at Emeryville not having had this, but I can say that in Philadelphia, there was absolute corruption of city workers, not enforcing the fine but taking a little bit of money under the table. And it was expected in getting anything built by small-time builders in the city, they had to pay the building department under the table. You know, and this is where the fines can, in some, you know, if it's not monitored well, fines can encourage corruption. We don't do, you know, we need to, we need to look at that in a way- We don't do, you know, we need to look at that in a way that if the fines are too onerous and people try to go to the corruption route, you know, that's, we can't have, we have to have the fines be motivating to solve the problem, but not in such that it's just going to be overwhelming. We have to make the process, I think, relatively simple and clear, and for people of the city to know what the fines are, we need to publish them. People need to know before, beforehand.
Okay. Yeah.
Andrea, first of all, I want to thank you for explaining the various modes of redress, like civil or criminal procedures, versus trying to get the problem behavior to stop, and why this might be a better route to go. So first of all, I want to thank you for your preparation for the report and how you presented it to us. I actually have very little comments, except that in one of your examples, I don't know how it's possible to differentiate a nuisance or a harm created by a complaint, that the complainer feels versus the actual harm or damage. And I don't know whether we really want to go into that, but in the example of the late delivery, what harm is being done to the complainer? I mean, why is that a nuisance? You know, just as, I mean, yes, it's a technical infraction of how we set up our ordinance, but what, you know, I would want some aggrieved party not to be able to misuse this just because they have a chip on their shoulder. Maybe they don't like something for ideological reasons, or they just have a chip on their shoulder against their neighbor, or whatever. But, you know, I'm not sure what the harm to the common good is around that.
If I may address that.
Yeah.
As it relates to the ordinances, the city council has acted, and as it relates to the delivery ordinance, there was actually discussion of what the hours should be for delivery. And so when the council says 8:00 PM, you know, city staff will enforce. But with that said, we have a varied caseload, and we have to prioritize that caseload. And the enforcement of somebody making a delivery at 8:15 versus a house that's not boarded up, and you have squatters-
Exactly.
-creating some violent, potentially violent situations, staff is going to prioritize the code enforcement that creates, that helps fixes the situation that has a true public health threat.
Right.
But as staff, we do enforce what council codifies. And so this is the case where we give a warning, and, you know, we understand they have to hire somebody. We may give them more time to come into compliance, knowing that you have to hire somebody and go through that paperwork, as opposed to hire somebody in seven days, and then comes your, you know, first fine at $100 and your second fine at $200. There is some discretion involved, because ultimately, what we want to do is gain code compliance. And finding a business that is expanding, that is otherwise a good actor, and is maybe just struggling a little bit, that's where staff's discretion for code enforcement comes in.
Yeah, that doesn't really answer my question, though, which is that there could be some nitpicker who just wants to go through our Muni code and, like, go after someone, but, who's technically out of compliance, but there's still no harm being done.
Well, but then staff balances that against the code complaints we have where there is harm being done.
Right.
So that, the delivery ordinance violation may very well go to the bottom of the pile.
Bottom of the list. I understand what you're saying, I guess, yeah. But, and then, is the process for triggering all this basically complaint-driven by a member of the public?
It is my understanding that we are a complaint-driven code enforcement city. We do not do proactive code enforcement.
That's right. If I can jump in, Mayor. Yes, our code enforcement now is largely complaint-driven, and so the concept of, you know, we get complaints either from neighbors or from members of the public. So it is code--
I mean, large parties, the squatters, I mean, I could understand all of that, but, and maybe at some point, we should become proactive for the more egregious kinds of violations, but I don't have any more comments. I'm beating the dead horse.
When will you be bringing this back to us for enactment?
I do not know.
Well, I think first, what we would like is some direction from the council as to whether or not the council would like to see a first reading of this. And if that's the case, the soonest that we would be able to bring this back to you would likely be your August meeting. If not then, then your first September meeting.
I would certainly like to have them bring it back. I'll have the rest--
Yes.
Yes, I think having another tool in the toolbox is a good idea.
Okay.
So my comments are closely related to Ruth's comments. I definitely think that this is something that needs to come forward. I think staff could use these tools. However, I think there were some concerns raised the last time we saw this at council concerning, you know, well, I'll put it this way. I am 100% confident in our staff, in their motives, and their ability to balance the weight of each of these citations. However, for future council, excuse me, for future staff and future councils, to be able to have a checks and balances system, I think would be important, and I've been trying to wrap my own head around how we could do that. So along with the ordinance, I'd like to see some suggestions on how we could do that. One idea I've got is just an informational list that comes to city council in terms of what citations are being issued and how they are being responded to. I'm especially interested in the ones that compound on folks who are saying that they don't have the ability to pay them. So, you know, that's one way that we can achieve some transparency, that city council and staff can have a continued and transparent conversation that's open to the public, where we can just make sure that we're checking in with each other, and that our, you know, we're wearing those motives on our sleeves. So that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see the ordinance come back, and I'd like to see, and if you have other suggestions, please send those along.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Is it that the ordinance needs to have that, or can that just be direction to staff?
I've thought about that, and I'm wondering if that should be in the ordinance, because if it's direction to staff, again, I'm saying I trust all you folks, as what happens 10 years from now.
Would it be possible to have a mere resolution instead of the ordinance?
You would need to be the judge of how effective you think that might be and bring that back to us.
Okay.
But I'm open to different--
But I don't think we want to make something so difficult on staff that it's taking a dramatic amount of time. The idea is that it's an efficient use of staff time and an efficient application of the council's wishes. I like the simplicity of it so it doesn't burden staff.
I think one of the things that I would do is talk, basically, it's our building division that generates a lot of the notices of violations, but figure out what existing databases we have, and what reports that they can generate to track it. When you do open a code enforcement complaint, it does need to be tracked, and so we need to have some sort of mechanism for tracking that.
Yes, one other clarifying question. When we bring this back, did the council also want to see a component of the ordinance that allows for recovery of staff time, cost recovery for staff time?
Yeah, I think that's what we were discussing.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one more question. So, right now, I'm aware that the minimum wage ordinance has its own administrative enforcement scheme. What we would probably do is bring back an ordinance where minimum wage would no longer have its own enforcement scheme, but rather, it would all be baked into one ordinance. Is there any desire to keep minimum wage the way it is, or have it all be one?
It makes sense to have the administrative procedure for pursuing these kinds of things in one place, so everybody understands what the rules are.
Agreed.
And the fines.
And I feel like we've given direction, but I see Mr. Carpio has his hand up. Did you want to give a public comment, Mr. Carpio?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Do you feel like you have the direction you need?
Yes.
I think we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That adjourns this special study session. We're moving on to the yellow agenda. This is the management of Emeryville Services Authority. 7:17 PM. Calling this meeting to order. Please note, we are all still here. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time for items that would be under the subject matter jurisdiction of management of Emeryville Services Authority? Yes, please come forward.
I, Enzantos, represent SEIU Local 1021. And in the, in relationship to the bargaining between Camp and Mesa, we have but one concern, and it's on page three of the agreement, tentative agreement, at 6.1.1, which is called the automatic leveling adjustment, or what we're calling the Me Too Agreement. We feel that it interrupts with our ability to negotiate effectively if we're going to be negotiating for not only our union, but also for the camp as well. And it creates undue responsibility on us, who have no representation within Camp.
Good afternoon. My name is Santos Quintero. I'm the SEIU FIA rep. We represent the city workers. We have teachers, public work, and also the staff here at City Hall. Once again, just the Me Too clause, the 3% that Camp receives, that doesn't make any sense for our members. We have members making close to $35,000, $40,000 a year, so a 3% would represent close to $1,000 a year. That's not going to be helping a lot. Those members will have to pay rent, have to pay the bills, so we're asking you to please just, once again, take a look at our proposals. I know that we cannot talk to you. That's why we have our next meeting pretty soon, but hopefully, City Council can have better direction on the Me Too clause for our members. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, we are moving to the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Davis, a second by Councilmember Atkins.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
That takes us to item 5.1. This is the resolution of the Board of Directors of Management of Emeryville Services Authority, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Emeryville Association of Confidential Administrative Managerial and Professional Employees with a term effective July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019. And we have Ian Appleyard, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you. Tonight, in front of you is the memorandum of understanding labor agreement with the Camp Bargaining Unit. And the Camp President could not be here today because he was ill, but he wanted to express that he felt that this was a fair settlement, that he was satisfied with the process from the city perspective. Also feel that it was a very satisfying and fair process. We engaged in good faith, had about seven or eight meetings. It's a very efficient process. The highlights are that this will result in a three-year term, taking us through June 2019. And each one of those years, a 3% raise will be provided to the Camp represented employees. Also in front of you is the unrepresentative pay and benefits plan. Those are for, the two employees that are unrepresented, and it basically mirrors a lot of the Camp terms and conditions. If you have any questions, I'm willing to field them at this time.
Hey, are there any clarifying questions from council?
I'd like to hear from the public, if there is any.
Okay, and is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on items 5.1 and 5.2?
Move the resolutions 5.1 and 5.2.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember, yes, staff?
One at a time.
One at a time? Okay, so let's do--
5.1.
And we have the same second, so yes, that's a motion by Member Davis, second by Member Atkins. And is there any discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins.
Here, I mean, I.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Sounds like real call.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
Do we have a motion for 5.2?
Move what 5.2?
Second. Motion by Davis, second by Atkins.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
All right, we're moving on to item 5.3. This is the resolution of the Board of Directors of Management of Emeryville Services Authority, approving an amended and restated agreement for employment between Mesa and Carolyn Lair, a city manager, for a two-year period commencing July 1, 2016, and terminating June 30, 2018, and authorizing the Chair of the Board of Directors to execute said agreement on behalf of Mesa.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Michael Gane, the City Attorney. For your consideration is the amended and restated agreement of employment between the Mesa Board and Carolyn Lair as the city manager. This amended and restated agreement would supersede and replace the existing agreement of employment between the Mesa Board and Ms. Lair. The highlights of the amended and restated agreement are in your staff report, starting on page two. I won't cover all of the bullets. The, I will say, though, that the new term would take us from July 1 of this year through June 30 of 2018. The other aspects of the employment agreement as to pay and benefits are outlined in the staff report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gena? Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item 5.3? Okay.
Move what 5.3?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Atkins. We have a brand-new city clerk, everyone, so if I'm going slow, so really spell it out. And is there any discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And the motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
Okay, that adjourns this meeting. Which brings us to another short meeting. This is the blue agenda. This is the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note, the time is now 7:25. I'm calling this meeting to order. And please note, we are all still here, with Councilmember Asher excused. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment at this time for items under the subject matter jurisdiction of the City of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar, items 4.1 and 4.2.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
So we have a motion by Davis, second by Atkins. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with Councilmember-- Motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
And that adjourns this meeting. Okay, now we're on to the green agenda. This is the regular City Council meeting. The time is 7:26. Calling this meeting to order, and now, we can do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please note, we are all still here with Councilmember Asher excused, and we do have one special order of the day. If you'll bear with me for a second, I'll pull it up. Oh, thank you. This is a City of Emeryville proclamation proclaiming July 2016 as Parks Make Life Better, and there's an exclamation point there, month in Emeryville. Whereas, parks and recreation make lives and communities better now and in the future. Whereas, it is established through statewide public opinion research, 98% of California households visit a local park at least once a year. Two in three households visit a park once a month, and 50% of households participate in an organized recreation program, and most park use is with family and friends. And whereas, residents value recreation as it provides positive alternatives for children and youth to reduce crime and mischief, especially during non-school hours, it promotes the arts, and it increases social connections, aids in therapy, and promotes lifelong learning. And whereas, residents value their parks for access to outdoor spaces for children and adults to play and be active, exercise, and group sports. And whereas, parks provide access to the serenity and inspiration of nature and outdoor spaces, as well as preserve and protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community. And whereas, the residents of the City of Emeryville, including children, youth, families, adults, seniors, as well as businesses, community organizations, and visitors, benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, green space, facilities, and programs, including the Senior Center, Recreation Center, Doyle Hollis Park, Marina Park, and many other parks and facilities provided by the City of Emeryville. And whereas, the City of Emeryville urges all its residents to recognize that parks and recreation enriches the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. And whereas, July is celebrated across the nation as Parks and Recreation Month, now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Diane Martinez, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2016 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the City of Emeryville, and urge all of the Emeryville community to use and enjoy our parks, trails, green space, facilities, and recreation opportunities proclaimed this 5th day of July 2016 by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. So, go out and enjoy our parks. And at this time, I will entertain any public comment on items that are not on our agenda, or items that are on the consent calendar, which is everything under six. So, is there anyone who wishes to speak at this point? All right, seeing none. Is there a city manager's report?
Very briefly, Madam Mayor, apropos to the proclamation that you just mentioned, this is a reminder that we will be celebrating the grand reopening of our very beautiful Art Deco, restoration of our Art Deco-style Senior Center this Friday, July 8, at 11:00 a.m. Please come and join us. I've seen the building recently. It is gorgeous. It is truly something to be proud of. So, everyone is welcome.
Thank you. I had a, I ran in when I found out it was open, and I took a look, and I went upstairs and downstairs and had the tour, and it's really looking great.
Move the consent calendar.
I want to either pull 6.5, or have a correction to the minutes, and then have that under the original motion to approve. So, is there anybody else wanting to pull anything else?
I want to talk about 6.9.
So, let's just pull 6.5 and 6.9.
Okay, I'll second the motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Davis, a second by Councilmember Atkins, and that's for the consent calendar minus 6.5 and 6.9.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes 401, minus items 6.5 and 6.9, with Councilmember Asher excused.
All right, so 6.5, Ruth, do you have some comments or changes?
Yeah, so, in the minutes for the meeting last time, I appreciated Mayor Martinez's comments about the Orlando shooting in the nightclub. But I would, it's on page 11 of 11, under item 6.5. My suggestion was actually for flying the flag at half-staff, not for flying for the whole month. So, I'd like it to be, change the minutes to reflect that.
So, is that, that's a motion on the minutes with that adjustment, with that change?
Atkins.
So, we have a motion by Member Atkins, a second by Member Davis.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
Okay, so we've also pulled items 6.9. This is the resolution of City Council of the City of Emeryville, approving the scope of work and for authorizing the city engineer to advertise for public bids, the construction of the annual street rehabilitation project.
I'm a little concerned with some of the specifications for work on our paths and streets. For example, the new bike path that was paid for not with Emeryville General Funds, but with Measure B Funds, is kind of lumpy in the asphalt path. The concrete walking path is very smooth. It's almost like that the bid did not include a variant of rise versus run that was specified for that path. And I just want to make sure that for our street repairs, that we have specifications, so that we get evenness, and I don't want to cause extra costs to be much higher, but, you know, within normative standards. I just want to make sure that we have these kinds of specifications in our street work. And also, I want, of course, our neighbors and businesses to get adequate notice as a part of these bids.
Please go ahead. So, we don't, our director, Maurice Kaufman, is not in, but Richard, you're stepping in.
Yeah, good evening. Rich Cunningham, operations and facilities manager, sitting in for Maurice, who's out of, out of the country for a while. For all of you, Mayor Martinez and members of the council, especially Member Donahue, for raising the issue, that Bay Trail extension down there by the Black Bear Diners has not been unnoticed by a number of people. And there's a significant discussion underway with the contractor about what the final product looked like down there. It was not acceptable, and we did get feedback immediately. We appreciate you making it just as public an issue here, as other members of the community have made privately. And so, there's a pursuit on, on that issue with the contractor. We think what they did was put down asphalt that was too cold, and when they ran the roller over it, it created the condition that you've noticed. So, we are going to pursue that for rework. And then, in terms of the general question about specification here, just as much as the spec itself is valuable, it's also the strength and quality of the construction inspection. For instance, making sure that the asphalt is adequately hot, making sure that the rolling goes down well. And as you notice, we have some slurry seal in the contract, and so that has to go down well, and then not be driven on. You know, there's a lot of field management that we want to pay attention to, because this is our one annual shot for this. And we also have a relationship with Caltrans, because of San Pablo, that we also need to maintain in terms of our quality and specifications. Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify. They are going to repair it.
In front of the Black Bear?
Yeah.
Well, as you know, contractors are not always our best friends. So, we're pursuing it with them on a repair basis, because we don't see it as meeting what the final product expectation was, which, by the way, is measured in, in amounts of rise and fall within any given paved area. And so, we're not in a position where we can give you a specific answer on this, Councilmember Davis. It's, it tends to get difficult when you get into claim sessions with these contractors, because they'd like to make it everybody else's fault except theirs. So...
Well, that is very heavily used, and it's in a very critical area. So, your answer is a little ambiguous. We need to have that repaired, and we need to have it done in a timely fashion.
Yes, this is one of these cases where we could do the repair at our expense, and it would be done, redone correctly. But we don't feel that the general direction from the council is to be doubling the expenditure out of the city's pockets. We prefer to pursue the contractors when we have non-performance. But this is, this is a managerial direction from up above, and we play this conservatively in terms of expenditure.
I understand that if, if the city would go in and repair that, make it usable during the summer and fall months, that we would have no expectation of recourse against the contractor?
Well, what happens is the contractor will, would ultimately say, "Well, you never gave us a chance to go and fix it." You know, this is after unteemed numbers of weeks and months of arguing with these people in claim sessions. Carolyn?
Yeah. This, this is a very good question, and I think that this is a case where we will be in consultation with the city attorney as to what our best recourse is. Certainly, there is an opportunity for the city to make the repair itself, and then submit a claim, or take some kind of legal action in order to recover those funds. But I'd like to talk to the city attorney about what our best choices are. But it's always better to first give the contractor the opportunity to make the repair themselves. It's always more expeditious. But we will do what we need to do to make the repair.
Well, there is another issue here. I understand that the perception of this as being uneven started the day it opened. And, and when did the city come forward to inspect that work, and inspect that, the progress of the work? Did we have an inspector out there?
There was an inspector out there. I don't know the exact sequence on this, and that's one thing we're trying to figure out with the contractor, as to who was in there. They may have taken subsequent action with the inspector not looking at a particular section of the work that then resulted in defective work. And this is where you have to start getting into inspection diaries and everything else. It gets, it's pretty complicated.
I'd like to ask our city attorney if we're getting a little too deep in the weeds on this one subject, when it's actually not, you know, it's good to bring it up.
Sure, yeah.
Obviously, everyone's very interested, but I'm wondering if we might...
Right, it's not, and thank you, Mayor. So, this isn't properly agendized as an item on your, on your agenda tonight. What we, what I could ask the council, if the council's so inclined, is that we could bring back an agenda item at your next meeting. We could do a full report, and we could provide some options about what direction we could take, and provide you an update then.
Well, year to year, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars maintaining and improving our roads. And if we don't have inspectors out there that are doing their job, we've got to find that out, and we've got to correct it. So, I would hope we would have an agenda item, not, not on the next meeting, that's a little too quick. But certainly, are we meeting in August or not?
Yeah, so we'll be, yeah, we're meeting in August.
All right, okay.
Okay.
But Scott was, was very good to bring that forward. We have to make sure that our process is correct, and we're getting our money's worth from these guys.
Scott, is the ride uncomfortable, or is it dangerous?
Well, if you've got a full load of groceries on your bicycle, things are jumping around in there. It's not so good.
So, don't buy anything carbonated until we get this fixed. Is that, that's the advice?
I second your motion to approve that item, Scott.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Donahue?
I move to approve.
Second by Councilmember Davis. I think we're done with our discussion.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And the motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight, but we have a couple of action items. Item 8.1 is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, approving a memorandum of understanding between the management of Emeryville Services Authority and the Emeryville Association of Confidential Administrative Managerial and Professional Employees, also known as Camp, with a term effective July 1, 2016 through Jenny, June 30, 2019.
So, Michael, just explain one thing.
Yes.
We already approved this on the Mesa agenda.
That's right.
So, why does it need to come to this particular legal entity versus the legal entity of Mesa?
Because of the relationship between the Mesa Board and the City of Emeryville.
We have the money.
That's right. The City of Emeryville ultimately has the money.
Well said, well said.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. That is very correct.
To the point.
Yes. This is essentially approving the action that you just took in your capacity as a Mesa Board.
Move approval.
Second.
So, a motion by Member Atkins, a second by Member Davis. Any more discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
Move 8.2.
Our second.
We got a motion by Member Davis, second by Member Donahue. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would appreciate the opportunity to serve this fine city for another two years. Thank you in advance.
Thank you, and I'd love to comment that we look forward to having you. And actually, I should ask if there's any public comment. There's none. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes 401 with Councilmember Asher excused.
This moves us to communication and reports. Are there any reports from department heads?
I have a question for our chief.
Yes?
Chief Tahada, we know that there was a lot of fireworks going off in Oakland, but what about Emeryville? Can you give us a little feedback on that?
We had a relatively quiet evening in Emeryville. I think the weather kept people home inside.
Very good, very good.
And I want to just thank others.
My street was really loud.
We didn't, we...
After Street is Oakland.
We didn't get a lot of calls for service, and I want to thank the Public Works Department and the Fire Department for helping us keep Emeryville safe on 4th of July. Thank you.
Great. And I believe we also, we do have a planning directors' report. Are you handling this?
I am pinching for Charlie tonight. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm presenting the planning directors' report on the Planning Commission actions at their June 23 meeting. Note that Commissioners Bowders and Donaldson had excused absences for that meeting. The one action item that the Planning Commission took was on the Marketplace Redevelopment Project, the Parcel B Parking Garage Final Development Plan. The Commission approved the project... The Commission approved the project with minor modifications to the conditions of approval, and that vote was 5-0 with Commissioners Bowders and Donaldson absent. That approval is subject, is appealable to the city council within 15 days, which is Friday, July 8. If the council wishes to call this item for review, this is your opportunity to do so. Moving on, the, the Commission also considered amendments to the Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, or the Welo Ordinance. The Commission voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the planning regulations. The vote was, again, 5-0 with Commissioner Bowders and Donaldson absent. The proposed ordinance adopting the amendments will be presented to you for consideration for first reading at your September 6 meeting. Regarding the Pelco Mixed Use Project, the Commission held a study session to review the proposed conversion of an existing significant building into 23 live-work and two commercial units at 1550 Park Avenue. While the Commission expressed general support for the project, numerous issues were identified that will need to be addressed before the project will be ready for consideration for approval by the Commission. Next was 5876 Bodry Street, a new unit. The Commission held a study session to review a proposed new one-bedroom unit at a property with two existing units. The Commission had a few minor comments and generally expressed support for the project. It is scheduled to be considered for approval by the Commission at their August meeting. And then finally, regarding planned Bay Area 2040 scenarios.
Sorry.
No worries. The Commission reviewed the development alternative for the region's 2017 Sustainable Community Strategy as mandated by SB 375. Alternatives include growth throughout the region, growth in medium-sized cities with BART or Caltrain, and growth in the three largest cities. The scenarios are scheduled to be reviewed by the city council at your next meeting on July 19. At the request of the Transportation Committee, a representative from MTC will be present at that meeting to respond to any questions you may have about the scenarios. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you.
Could I ask Michael a question? Michael, I'm, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but we have a meeting on this Fair Work Week for the businesses and employers, and it's scheduled for a vacant storefront in Bay Street. Why wasn't it scheduled for City Hall? Does anybody have the answer to that?
I do not have the answer to that, no.
I think this is an item that, or an event that was planned by our new economic development manager, Chad Smalley, and this is specifically an outreach for the businesses to attend. This is not a council meeting. This is to bring the proposals out to the, to the businesses in the hopes that they would participate at a higher level than if it was held here in the evening. It's, I think it's a lunchtime.
No, it's 9 o'clock in the morning. Just when all the retailers are... So I just wondered about the place that was planned and also the time that it's planned for.
It was, it was specifically to make sure that we attract the largest number as an outreach effort, and a great deal of cooperation and helpfulness from the management at Bay Street to encourage participation and provide the facility.
Are there any other reports from department heads? Okay, moving on, item 9.2, do any council members?
I just have, I just have a request. I'm staring at this, Catherine, I guess this will fall to you or your cohorts here, but I'm staring at this overhead projector map of this city of Emeryville, and I like the idea of listing landmarks to orient people to the city, but it is so outdated. And I'd like to, and I realize we're a very dynamic city, and when we redo this map, it will get obsolete again, but I think we've reached a critical mass of things that just aren't there anymore or are here with a different name. So I noticed, I mean, Freddie's Bakery is listed, Woodfin Sweet Hotel, which no longer exists, Chiron is now, Novartis.
Our middle school and our elementary school will be gone.
So, point taken. Thank you. It'll be redone, yes.
Can I ask a question? So this was a map that was produced by the Redevelopment Agency, probably...
Way back when.
Probably about eight years ago, maybe more.
Oh, you even know.
Yeah. It was very expensive to produce. It was made into pads, and they were given away. It would be certainly very easy for us to do a GIS map that was more updated, but not necessarily printed in the, in the, with the expense that we had went to, to print this document. So I'm curious, is it that you'd like to have an updated map here at the podium, or would you like us to actually produce a new map that we, we distribute? Because the reason, yes, so the reason, if you remember, the other side of this listed all of the businesses and had contact information for those businesses, so it was, it was sort of a marketing document versus...
Well, I would defer to our new economic development folks, Chad or you staff, to see if this can be a useful tool.
Yeah, because we certainly can create a map for this use.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But whether it's mass-produced or whatever.
This map is, I guess you could say, graphically enhanced for our city. I mean, a graphic designer went in and made sure that all the text was readable, that, you know, this, this was a expensive map, I can just tell, looking at it. And because of its readability for the general public, the GIS map, I doubt, would be readable in that way. So, you know, maybe there's a way to, you know, to use the... Yeah, to take this, which may not be a digital file, maybe it could be merely updated. That would be preferable, to use this map with just updated names, if it's possible.
Right, we'll look into it, yeah. Thank you. All right, any council members reporting on meetings attended? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Next regular meeting is July 19. I can, boy, that was, that was just...